Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started this morning with the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. This morning, the invocation will be presented by Pastor LaRue Drinkwater from Redeemed Missionary Baptist Church. And I'll ask Councilman Pete White to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everybody please stand?
Hear me cry, oh God, and attend unto my prayer. From the end of the earth will I cry unto thee when my heart is overwhelmed. Lead us to the rock that is higher than I. Father, in the name of Jesus. We come, oh God, this morning, oh gracious God, at this special place on this special time. Oh gracious master, we come today with thanksgiving in our hearts. To give you thanks, oh gracious master, for all that you have already done for us this morning. And thank you, oh God, for all that you will do. We pray, oh gracious God, special blessings upon the council this morning. We pray, oh gracious master, that you direct their minds, their hearts. And, oh gracious God, speak through each person. Oh gracious God, that whatever is designed, oh God, to do, that it be done by the directions of the Holy Spirit. Thank you so much, oh gracious master, for the appeal of this city. Thank you, oh gracious master, oh God, for the future plans, oh gracious God, for this great city. And we thank you, oh gracious master, that we do know that you're God, oh gracious God, that holds us in the hollow of thine hand. And we come today to say thank you. We plead with you, oh gracious God, that you accept our prayer this morning, in the name of Jesus, for Christ's sake. Amen.
I'll ask Kristi Jaeger to come up and ask the clerk to read the proclamation.
Whereas municipal government is the closest form of government to citizens and has the most impact on their daily lives and their communities. And whereas Municipal Government Week provides citizens an opportunity to learn and gain a better understanding of how city government works and to recognize the critical role municipal government plays in their lives. Whereas Oklahoma City was incorporated in 1890 to meet the needs of its citizens and currently provides police and fire protection, water sewer and trash services, streets and roads, parks, code enforcement, animal welfare, and other vital public services. Whereas nine elected officials set policy, enact ordinances, authorize expenditures, and ensure the city of Oklahoma City not only meets the needs of its citizens but is also moving in the right direction. Whereas over 4,000 city employees provide quality public services to the citizens of Oklahoma City and more than 500 citizens volunteer their time to serve on the city's advisory committees, boards, trusts, and commissions. And whereas 18 Oklahoma City youth who serve on the city's youth council are learning about the challenges and success of city government firsthand and addressing issues related to youth. And whereas Oklahoma City residents are invited to come to City Hall to view the Sooner or Later exhibit to learn more about the history of their city government and to visit other city facilities to see their government in action. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim March 21st through 25th as Municipal Government Week in Oklahoma City. And he urges all citizens to take this opportunity to recognize our municipal government and to explore its history from the tent city of decades ago to today's intricate management, preservation, and protection of over 500,000 city residents across more than 600 square miles.
We don't vote on that, do we? Okay, just want to make sure. You want to say something?
This is Municipal Government Week and it's very important that we recognize the over 500 volunteers that sit on boards, trusts, and commissions for the city of Oklahoma City. It's their dedication, their time, that they allow democracy to happen here. And that's important to local government. It's why we're so successful. We are giving those 500 people pens this week to help recognize them and thank them. And also, the city workers should also be thanked for all of their dedication.
Next, I would like to have the 2011 Westmore Palm Squad come up. They had the privilege to compete a while back and they won the national championships. And as they're coming up, go ahead and have the city clerk read the resolution.
Whereas the Westmore High School Varsity Palm Squad coached by Natalie Zelny received top honors in the Large Varsity Hip-Hop Division and they won the national title of the 2011 UDA National Dance Team Championships held in Orlando. And whereas the Westmore Jaguars are no strangers to the national competition stage, this is their fifth consecutive national title and their fourth consecutive win in the hip-hop division. Whereas over 300 high school and all-star dance teams from across the nation competed in up to two of four divisions, including jazz, hip-hop, palm, and high kick. In addition to being the national champions and winning the hip-hop championship, the Westmore Jaguars also took fourth place in the jazz division. Whereas members of the national championship squad include Destiny Smith, Jordan Jackson, Kelsey Lakin, Wiley Cole, Kaitlyn Bruza, Laney Elliott, Hannah Scott, Jasmine Moreno, McKella Green, Kaitlyn Rogers, Courtney Bruza, Madison Gaylor, Gillian Buxton, Anna Elliott, Erica Welch, and Sarah Berry Lee. Whereas Coach Zelny has been with the team for over two seasons and the squad's choreographer, Emily Shawk, has been with the team for eight years. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby commend and congratulate the Westmore High School Varsity Palm Squad on winning the national championship title and winning the Large Varsity Hip-Hop Division of the 2011 UDA National Dance Team Championships.
Cast your votes. Maybe. And it passes. Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
My wife actually cheered at Westmore in high school. Anybody that says it's not a sport or doesn't take time and dedication is sorely mistaken. So they need to be recognized for that effort. Congratulations, ladies. Unfortunately, Ms. Nita Soret, the teacher of the month, I don't believe was able to make it this morning. And so we're going to defer that item to next week. Do we need a motion? I'd like to make a... You got a second? Cast your votes. And it passes. We're deferring that item until next week. Next will be the Journal of Council Proceedings, Received Journal of Council Proceedings for March 15th, 2011, and Approved Journal of Council Proceedings for March 8th, 2011. I'll entertain a motion. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item five, requests for uncontested continuaries.
Mr. Vice Mayor, in addition to item 8A3, which is listed on the document, on the agenda today, I've got a couple of others. On page 15, under item 8C1F, 1721 Northwest First Street, whereas that be stricken, the owner has removed 8C1F. And then on to page 16, under 8E1B, 1918 Northeast Grand Boulevard, whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. And item C, 6900 London Way, whereas that be stricken, that facility is now occupied.
We'll recess to the council meeting and reconvene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are eight items, it looks like. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCMFA, reconvene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are two items. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn OCPPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There's one item. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT, reconvene as a council, reconvene the council meeting on the consent Are there any individual considerations?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I do, I'd like to speak to 6J1 and 2 with just a quick question and 6Y.
Any other individual considerations? Seeing none, Maggie, have a floor.
Oh, that was easy. 6J1 and 2 are some change orders related to the Mirren Gardens renovation, Mr. City Manager. And just a quick question, we're certainly well within the 10% cap on change orders, but I just wondered what kind of contingency budget we might have in there if you...
We're very close to being on budget on the Mirren Gardens. We're slightly underneath. Obviously, the Mirren Gardens is a smaller piece of the overall Project 180 program and it's made up of dollars not only from the TIF that helps fund that but also from some general obligation funds that were associated primarily for the glazing on that. But right now, on the Mirren Gardens, we're very close to our budget. But again, there are some contingency funds, but they're more involved in the overall contingency of the overall 180 program.
Great. I drove by yesterday. I've never seen so many people working. It just looks like a...
They need to be.
Beehive of activity. It was really exciting. Thank you. And 6Y, I just want to recognize that Crestwood Baptist Church made a cash donation to the city of Oklahoma City, which is very much appreciated. Wanted to just pay special attention to that.
Are there any other individual considerations on the consent docket? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Anybody have a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item 7, the concurrence docket. Are there any individual considerations on the concurrence docket? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item 8, items requiring separate votes. We'll get started on item 8A1. It's an ABC alcoholic beverage consumption restaurant with alcohol district overlay, the C3 Community Commercial District, 13800 Quail Springs Parkway, Ward 8. Councilman Ryan is not here. And Larry?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Ryan asked me if I would handle this. He is in favor of this. There were no protests at the planning commission meeting. Is there anyone signed up here? The applicant is here. If you have any questions, this is to add alcohol to a hotel out in the Quail Springs area. I move for approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
And then the applicant is also, Your Honor, asked for the emergency, so I will move the emergency.
Cast your votes for the emergency. Passed unanimously. On to item 8A2, this is an ABC alcoholic beverage consumption restaurant with alcohol district overlay, the Spud 59, simplified plan unit development, C3 Community Commercial, and O1 limited office districts at 2127 West I-240 Service Road. This is in Ward 5. I've had no protest at planning and we've had no protest as far as I know. Is there anybody signed up to speak? Seeing no protest, I move the approval. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And I've also asked for the emergency.
We need to wait. Same gets same.
Okay. Okay. So we can come back and revisit the emergency? Okay. Well, I'll withdraw that until later time. Item 8A3, 10401 West Reno Avenue from I-2 Moderate Industrial District to PUD 1431 Plan Unit Development District. It's in Ward 3. Larry?
Your Honor, this was asked to be withdrawn. I don't think we need any action, do we, Francis?
No.
All right. And now that Sam's back, I would move back to item 8A2 for the emergency. I'll make the motion for the emergency on item 8A2. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item 8A4, this is 3800 South Portland Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential, C3 Community Commercial, and AE2 Airport Environments Overlay District to SPUD 596, Simplified Plan Unit Development District. This is Ward 3. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bob, did we get the easement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This was presented last week. We were just missing the easement. It's for Dollar General to move into an area that has not had any retail in a number of years. Very exciting. There were no protests at planning and no protests, I don't believe, here. Were there today, Francis?
No.
I'd like to move for approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
On to item 8A5, this is Spud 600, 3901 Northwest 63rd Street from R1 Single Family Residential and C3 Community Commercial Districts to Spud 600, Simplified Plan Unit Development District. This is in Ward 1. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, do we have the TEs? Did they accept the TEs on there?
Yes, there's no problem with this one.
Okay. I don't think there was any protest. Anybody here to speak against it? Is the applicant here? Is there somebody here? Would you come up for just a second? I got a quick question. It took me a while to get somebody to answer the question. Maybe the public wants to know it too. The columbrim, is that how you say it? Explain what that is.
It is a structure that is used to enclose cremated human remains within, and in this particular area, within a courtyard of the church.
A garden courtyard area and so forth. So looks like a nice extension to the church. So, nobody signed up, Francis, to speak on this? I'll move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to item 8B, this is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. This is assigning the name of Wheeler Park Drive to the private drive leading into and through Wheeler Park between South Western Avenue and South Chertel Avenue, Ward 6.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. We've had this brought before us a couple of times. I don't believe there's been any negative discussion. I move approval with the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item 8C, this is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anybody signed up to speak under dilapidated structures? Move the item. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item 8D, this is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures in the Historic Preservation Landmark District. There are two items.
Vice Mayor, can we take those separately?
Absolutely. We'll address item D1A1. It's 304 Northwest 22nd Street. It's a detached garage in Ward 6.
This is a situation, this is, this item has been deferred a number of times and my understanding is that some work has actually been done on the structure, but it was done without a permit and we need to take the opportunity to go inspect it and make sure it was done in a safe and sound manner. So I would move that we declare this property dilapidated.
We are voting on item D1A only. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item D1B, it's 1000 Northwest 37th Street. It's a garage apartment, Ward 2. And Mr. Bill Comstock has signed up to speak on this. Sir? If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Bill Comstock, 501 Northwest 13th Street in Oklahoma City. I represent the owner of this property, Mr. Gene Von Stein. As all of you are aware, this has been deferred numerous times. The council is probably sick of seeing this property appear on here. But we submit, it's not in the dilapidated condition the city contends it is. Mr. Von Stein has been working diligently, now frantically, to secure the funding to renovate this property or get the property in the hands of somebody that does have the resources to remodel this, get it off this list, and hopefully restore it to the historical property that it always was and hopefully always will be. If this council is inclined to declare it dilapidated, I would urge that you defer the demolition date. We would be happy to provide updates. I'm confident there is going to be progress made. Myself and many others, certainly the owner, would hate to see this property torn down.
Vice Mayor, this property has been deferred at least two times. It sits just east of Western Avenue, Northwest 37th, just across the street from Crown Heights Methodist Church. A beautiful old art deco building, four units with a four-car garage. And Mr. Comstock's right, it's a, it's a property that it behooves all of us to work to keep. And I don't know anybody that's intent on doing away with Mr. Comstock, Mr. Von Stein here with us this morning, the owner. And I agree that he has been working diligently in the last several weeks to do what's necessary. The problem is, it's been, it's been in that state of disrepair for some years. I don't want to get into debate on how long it's been that, but the neighborhood's been watching it, monitoring it. The neighborhood's had conversations with Mr. Von Stein. And not until it got on this list did we really begin to see some, some really assertive action. And no question about it, there's been a lot of communication to staff recently about plans and intent. And this is, I have to understand, this is just the garage. It's on the, on the docket. The house is separate from that. It's important to save the garage as well. Understand that and want to do everything we can. I just want you to know and Mr. Von Stein to know that it is everybody's intent to save this property, both the garage and the house. I think it's in the best interest of all that we keep it on this list. And as you say, you've begun to make, you've begun to make updates with the staff. They're aware of that. They see the work that's being done. Understand there's a lot of look at how this garage, at least the facing of it, can be salvaged. Part of it may have to come down. And I know that there is a investor that is very interested in this property and working closely with Mr. Von Stein. So I believe it's all going to happen. But I think it's happening because we finally have put it on this dilapidated list with the intent to get movement on it. And as long as this communication continues with the staff, intents, bids, estimates, we're going to be working with you. It's, it's not going to be coming down. Charles, just confirm some of this form because I'd like to see it stay on so that we can continue moving in the way that's been moving.
I don't think I can say it any better than you did. I mean, it's, leaving it on today doesn't, doesn't alter the fact that they can continue to, to work on this property. And as long as they make progress, of course, as usual, we'll work with them.
And you've been having contact from them the last few weeks already?
Yeah.
Unless council has other questions, I'd like to leave it on the list. If you show this picture, what is the progress? I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification as to...
Well, the initial process is they've actually started contacting us where they haven't in the past. They've given us estimates and they've got some, I believe they've talked to our chief building inspector about potential either investors or selling the property. Up until then, we really haven't had no contact at all with, with, with the owners over a period of years. That's, that's why we wish to, you know, to leave this on.
This is the garage?
It's a garage apartment, yes.
Do you have a picture that backs off from it more? Okay.
Or did you just want to see the pictures? So are we good? Motion, second? Okay, everybody? All right, we're going to leave it on. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
On to item 8E1, public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anybody signed up to speak on unsecured structures? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item 8F, this is a resolution establishing a revised policy for the investment of municipal funds in the custody of the city treasurer. City Manager?
Vice Mayor Bob Ponco is here this morning, our city treasurer, to talk to us about the changes to the, to the policy.
The changes that you see in front of you are changes to the investment policy. A number of the changes are just to basically bring the policy more up to date with reporting standards, update language from the last time that we did a formal amendment to the policy. One thing I do want to stress is that our focus continues to remain on safety of our investments. Everything that we're proposing remains within what is authorized by state statutes. Again, we, our overall policy as it relates to authorized investments continues to be more conservative than what state statutes provide. We kind of just go in and pick and choose what we think will best fit our policy and maintain a, as I mentioned, that safety environment of our portfolios. We are looking at a couple of additional authorized investments, one being commercial paper for short-term. As you're probably aware, the returns on money markets and just about any short-term investment currently is basically zero. Using commercial paper will allow us to move into another option that still is, will be a very safe investment option. Again, we will only be looking at using the highest-grade commercial paper. Again, we'll only be using commercial paper for our short-term options. Maximum maturity on these will be around a six-month range. Another thing we're looking at is using callable agency securities. We currently use or invest in agency securities, meaning Fannie Mae's, Freddie Mac's, that sort of thing. One of the things that we would like to move into a little further would be to look at the same type of securities but with call options, meaning that we will have the opportunity to gain a little bit better return because the securities that we'll be looking at will have a tie-in to them that says, you know, this security, if you purchase it, could be called on a given date. And normally what we've done in the past is we just buy and hold and that's pretty much it. We do have some funds that we feel that we can use for this purpose that won't affect our, our overall laddering process, which is where we place our funds for maturity to meet our cash flow obligations. However, we... However, we will use a small portion of the portfolio for this purpose and will, again, maintain a factor of safety by structuring or managing our call structures and, you know, using these, again, in just a small allocation within a portfolio. That's kind of an overview of what you're seeing before you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Thank you. On to item 8G. I do not believe we need executive session, correct?
No, we'll bring that back in the next week or two and get into executive session on that issue.
Okay. On to item 8H. We do need executive session. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes.
And so on to item 8H, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. And pass unanimously to move item H to executive session. On to item nine, this is items from council. I'll ask Skip to get us started.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Meg? I have nothing either. Pete? Okay. Pete?
I'd like to pass my compliments to the River Park Neighborhood Association and Gina Daniel. They were announced as one of the four finalists for Neighborhood of the Year on a national competition. And she'll be going on a trip this summer to make a presentation with the possibility of being selected as the Neighborhood of the Year in the United States. So hats off to the River Park Neighborhood Association. And I'd like to thank Brian Munn for coming out last week to the meeting of the Windsor Forest Neighborhood Association and giving an outstanding presentation on his efforts to help clean up the city. And he's done an excellent job with his work release people cleaning up Crystal Lake. And really, I think the figure now is up to 1,700 tires that they pulled out of that area for city care. And it's really an outstanding project that Brian is doing. Thank you, Your Honor.
Let me add something to that.
Go ahead, Pete.
Knowing that I hardly do want to do without saying something, that is something we all need to be grateful for. What's going on with the county commissioner in that area has been remarkable. He's done some things in my area. Any of you that have works that touch Brian's district in Oklahoma City, and it's not just South Oklahoma City, it goes all around the city that way that they are gerrymandered up about the same way we are. So there's lots of opportunities. And I have not seen one job that they've taken on that they have done a really, really, really good job on.
Sam? Pete, I'm glad you said something because I was going to come back and give you a second opportunity, so. Onto city manager reports.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Craig Framans here this morning with Wendell. He doesn't hunt our park spectrum. Our budgeting process generally works pretty well. We're able to go down and sit in a very strategic way and go look at things as we go forward. And we're trying, able to balance different needs and balance everything together as we go out. We trade off additional police personnel versus maybe an additional parks or additional code enforcement because we all have different desires to do things. Swimming pools, however, does not fall well within our budget cycle because by the time we make budget decisions on a swimming pool, it's really too late to run that swimming pool for the full season. So with that, we need to have a brief discussion on swimming pools, and we're kind of doing it in a vacuum. It's outside of our regular budget process just because of the fact if we wait to do it in our regular budget process, it's too late for the full season. And so with that, Craig, if you can outline the issue.
Yeah, and really, this is an unusual situation that we come before you to discuss an issue like this prior to having the benefit of all the budget information, knowing how much funding may be available for program improvements, knowing what all the needs are that have been identified by the departments. And so it's unfortunate that we're here and having to have this discussion. But the issue comes up with these three pools. It's Macklenburg and Minus Lakeview, which are both standard pools, and then Woodson Pool, which is one of the specialty pools. And there are two specialty pools, one at Northeast and one at Woodson. One of the things that complicates this is the fact that all three of these pools in this past year, in the summer of '10, were actually proposed to be closed, but late in the budget process were funded with commitments of donations to help keep those open. Those donations weren't continuing donations, it was just a one-time to try to help get through this short period. Because of that, they weren't rolled into the base budget, and so they're not a part of the base budget. So a decision would have to be made, are we going to add those in as program improvements and fund those pools again this next summer? Further complicating it is the fact that all three of these pools have capital maintenance or repairs that are needed on the pools, which extends the time, it increases the investment in the pools, but then it extends the time that's required to get the pools ready for operation. So that's why we're here before you today, to give you kind of a context within the budget. Just generally, right now, we're still in the budget discussions with the departments and reviewing the proposals from the departments. But you all know that we've continued to have very strong revenue growth right now through this part of the year, this far into the year. We're about thirteen and a half percent growth on sales tax, far above normal. We do believe in the first half of the year storms had a lot of impact on that, but we're still seeing very, very strong growth. And right now, between sales and use tax, we're about $16 million over target in this current fiscal year. And so that has set the stage for a good year next year. We are expecting continued growth, though at a lower pace, at a slower pace than what we've had this year. Part of that's because we have to back out that storm impact before we factor in our growth for next year. Departments have not been asked to make budget cuts this year. We are working through program improvement proposals that are made by the departments, but it does appear that there will be some funding available for some program improvements next year. Any decisions that are made right now about a program improvement going into next year will limit the amount of money that's available for other improvements and other services. The three pools, we have the Macklenburg and Minus Lakeview, both standard pools. Those are actually the last two standard pools that are open. As a part of the aquatics program, staff has been moving towards really something that they feel like can be maintained longer term from a financial perspective and reaches more young people. Moving from the standard pools, which had lower participation and are higher maintenance costs, to the spray grounds has been a very successful move. These last two pools are still open at Macklenburg, at Minus. And so that's one of the issues that's there is the standard pools. And then the specialty pool, Parks would still like as part of that aquatics master plan, to keep the specialty pools open and the family aquatic centers. So it'd be the Northeast Pool and Woodson Pool, and then the family aquatic centers at Early Wine and Will Rogers. Now, all three of the pools that we're discussing do have free admission. Northeast also has free admission that they offer. And so the question at this point, then, is how do we move forward now? Because of the fact that we need to make this capital investment, we want to make sure it's a longer-term commitment, and it takes a longer period to get these ready before the swim season opens. So as we looked at this, it seems like there's three basic options that are here. One could be that we go ahead and open all three pools, make the capital investment now, commit about $135,000 of operating costs going into this next swim season or this next fiscal year. That would reduce the amount of money that would be available for program improvements in other areas. Another option would be open only the Woodson Pool, which is what was recommended by the Parks Department. That'd be a little bit lower cost, it's about $57,000 just for the operating cost for that pool. But again, would lower, to some degree, the amount available for other program improvements. A third option would be a wait-and-see option, to wait and evaluate this, all three of these pools, with the budget. All the budget information comes in, you get to look at all the funding that's available, the program improvement needs that are out there, and you could make a longer-term decision at that time because this really is a policy decision of the council. And the disadvantage with doing this, while it's better to be able to make that in the context of all of the other needs, the disadvantage would be because it would push us so late into the summer, into the early summer, that at best, with the improvements that are needed on the pools, the Parks Department would at best be able to open this for about half of the swim season. There are other complications with, it's more difficult to hire lifeguards for half of a swim season as opposed to being able to employ them for the full summer. And so there's a possibility, if we wait, they may not open this summer, but waiting would allow you to make a longer-term decision in the context of the full budget.
Or there's a potential combination of those options, too, if you'd like to open one of the pools at this time and then just hold and put the next two into the budget cycle and see how it comes out. There's something like that that could be accomplished, too. So it all depends on what the council wants to. There's no real good decision on this, but we do need some correction to go forward on one of the decisions.
And so with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Gary? And then Sam. Gary, and then Sam.
I'd like, as part of this discussion, if we could, to get beyond the year-to-year decisions with regard to these three pools and get some thrust towards a longer-term solution. So what I think, the handwriting's on the wall. These smaller pools cannot sustain the operations. And what we're hearing year after year is the aquatic center not only outperforms these but continues to perform better, and their break-even are better propositions, both the Will Rogers Pool and the Early Wine Pool. We had a study, Tim, I don't, Wendell, eight, six, ten years ago, an aquatics master plan study that called for additional full-blown aquatic family centers, like we have at Early Wine and Will Rogers. I think we just need to begin moving in that direction, at least in one area town, Northeast or north, some northeast, in the direction of plans and steps to a family aquatic center that will perform and be able to sustain itself like these other two. Because this is going to continue to be a year-to-year decision. Mr. Kelly and I have been three years now with managers' office and Parks people sitting down with United Way and other community partners to just get us by the next year. And it may take that again this year, just to keep some pools open. But we're quickly coming to the point that we're going to have two swimming opportunities in this city, and they're going to be the aquatic center. If that is the direction, and obviously the performance suggests that it is, then beyond just year-to-year decisions, just getting us through another year on what pools, smaller pools, we need to keep open, I think discussion needs to start on what are the steps to move towards another aquatic, family aquatic center, most likely Northeast.
Gary?
I've got some questions on all three of these, just so I've got it straight in my head. Minus Lakeview currently has a splash park built. Is that not true?
There was one that was proposed there, but it has not been constructed.
Is the money, if we do not open the pool itself, is the money still there to build a splash park, and could that be done by this summer?
Yes and no, sir. The money is still there, but getting it constructed and inspected and accepted by the time swimming season would open is not a possibility, sir.
Okay, and Macklenburg does have a splash park.
Yes, sir.
So if we chose to keep the pool open, we'd be operating two facilities there. We'd have the splash park and the pool going on at the same site. And Woodson doesn't have a splash park and was never scheduled to have one.
It does not, and no, sir, there's not one planned.
Okay. Well, I agree with Sam. You know, we had a master plan laid out, and I think we need to look long-term at what it is we want to do with all of this. These smaller pools, although there may be people who have a great interest in it, the participation seems to not warrant keeping them open year-to-year, but yet we also understand that the special interests come forward when it's in their neighborhood that they're going to close. But I do believe we need another aquatic center. I think that was in the master plan anyway, and we need to start talking about how we're going to do that long-term. But I do agree with Sam that these things just keep coming up, and we're headed towards the inevitable on some of them. What's the cost of a new aquatic center, like the one at Early Wine? What's that cost?
I can't really speculate what it would cost to duplicate perhaps an Early Wine, but I can tell you that Early Wine's initial cost was about two and a half million in '99. Yeah, over a decade ago.
And it was built with what kind of funds?
It was built, bond funds.
Geo-bond funds?
Yes, sir.
Is there the possibility that the current geo-bond funds and the previous issue, there's enough unallocated funds to do that out of both of those funds together?
You know, we really won't know that for some time until we've implemented more of, I believe you're speaking of the '07.
Right.
Until we've implemented more of those projects, we would want to be careful about declaring a part of that surplus so that we could build something until something that wasn't planned, until we're sure.
I mean, that's why we can't do it. But what's the possibility that we could do it? Is there some likelihood that there could be a couple million left over?
Let us not give an answer on that today and look at that.
I don't want to know why we can't. Hell, I know why we can't. We don't have the money.
Well, we haven't looked at it from that aspect. Let's look at it and come back and see if there's a possibility if we can or not. I don't want to give you a wrong answer.
Okay. It seems to me, though, that we've got to start looking at it like that. We've got, if that's not a source of money, then we need to figure another source of money. The reason that we have to keep doing what we're doing is because we haven't done that third or fourth aquatic center. That's why we have to keep, when you look where Minus Lakeview is located, how far would someone that lived in that area have to drive to find any kind of a facility similar to that? So even though it has low attendance, that's very much similar to some of the areas that I represent. There's nothing there. So if there had been one out there through some miracle 20 years ago, we'd still be trying to find a way to fund it because it'd be the only game in town for people that live in that part of the city. So I think a serious look at where we get the money and a serious agreement that that's what we're going to do is in order. But I don't, given the utilization of Woodson, I suspect that we ought to, in my view, we ought to just say, yes, we're going to continue with Woodson. I guess that's one of the options, is we continue with Woodson. That's one of them. For my money, we say yes. It's well utilized, and it's not one that is, in the short run, that appears to be in the plan to close down. The one at Macklenburg, since there is already another facility there, that might be something we could talk about. But both Minus and Woodson, it seems to me, we almost need to go ahead and make a commitment. If we couple that commitment with sometime during this budget cycle or shortly, or within the next few months, we come up with a long-term solution to resolving the problem Northeast. I mean, the money that's going into that facility, if we located the one at the right facility, over a period of time would help us pay for a new one. So.
Meg?
I mean, for my direction is, we do Woodson, we put it on, we put Minus on, and if we want to continue to wait and see on Macklenburg, that's fine, but that's where I come down.
Meg?
I concur with Pete on that one. I mean, serving 19,000 people and having a 30% increase over the previous year signals to me that that's a project that we definitely should continue. And, you know, the numbers aren't huge, but, you know, average attendance, we're serving 4,400 people at Macklenburg Pool, and we're serving 3,000 at Minus Lakeview. That's not an insignificant number of folks having an opportunity to enjoy swimming facilities. So I could be very easily persuaded to commit to all three of them today.
Skip?
And I would agree with everybody's comments, and as Sam said, you know, it's been a project every spring, we start this whole meeting and trying to figure out, you know, how we're going to have some water for kids to enjoy for the summer. And, you know, it's unfortunate that the placement of these pools are such And, you know, it's unfortunate that the placement of these pools are such as they are, but, you know, as to reality, as it relates to the geographic, Menace Lakeview probably will never match the, the numbers at Woodson's pool as it is right now, based on the density of the area. But there are still, you know, citizens there that have children, and those children need to, to be able to have an activity of swim. I truly believe that. One of the things I've been trying to figure out is, Woodson Pool, if it's up 30%, and it was once scheduled for closure, what has been the, the increase in the participation at Woodson Pool? Yes, go ahead.
Sir, are you asking what do we feel caused that increase?
Yes, sir.
The first year, they didn't have an admission fee. We saw a significant increase at Woodson when the admission fee was dropped.
Up by 30%?
Yes, sir.
When they dropped the admission fee?
Yes, sir.
And my second question is, how, in your guesstimated, you know, what would it take, in your opinion, to retrofit Woodson Pool to a more of an aquatic center pool? This pool has a Olympic-sized, I mean, it's an Olympic-sized pool, it has a high and a low diving. How much would it take for that area to be more of a aquatic center? And then you put a fee on the admission?
Well, we could certainly research what it would cost to convert that to a family aquatic center-style pool. I don't have the figure in mind, but we could certainly find out.
Because it just seems to me that, and I have had this discussion with the manager, and I've had the discussion with several of the members of the council, that the idea that was the result of the, the study that was done in reference to the aquatic centers in Oklahoma City, that the only way we're going to really get above this cost factor of maintaining these smaller pools is to create a, a, a full aquatic center that's geographically located, that would draw to those individuals who either live northwest, I'm going to say northeast, and north of Oklahoma City, and, and it would pay for itself. And I assume that Early Wine, there's not a loss of revenue that we see as it relates to the participation at Early Wine, is there?
Both Will Rogers and Early Wine Family Aquatic Centers have been exceptionally successful. And.
What would you say the reason why they are exceptionally, you know, performing?
Fun. I know it's, it's a little bit difficult to quantify fun, but those are facilities that the participants experience as very fun places to go. They're varied, they have the typical water park features that children expect these days, even though it's certainly not comparable with the whitewater, neither are, but neither is the price. So it's fun, sir, that.
And that's, that's exactly what I was trying to point as it relates, you know, for like one, Woodson Pool. I mean, it seems like this pool is big enough that you could create, maybe not to the exact same size as Early Wine, but surely you could create more fun-type amenities at the pool that would give that same attraction that you have at, at Early Wine, based on where it's located at. And I think this is the difference which you have as far as the new aquatic centers nowadays. Nobody goes to a pool just for the purpose of diving in a pool and swimming a lap and getting out unless you're on a swim team.
Expectations have changed, yes, sir.
Right, right. And I just think that if we look at, at these pools, and some of these pools, you would never have an opportunity to do that with. But I think there's, you know, a great, you know, possibility to create, you know, some of the, one of these pools that you, we still have on this list. And then, you know, for the future, we need to really start, stop talking about it and start doing what needs to be done to create a full aquatic center geographically that will attract individuals from, you know, different parts of the city that is not, that's basically a desert right now as it relates to aquatics. And, and, you know, I, I keep, keep hearing all this stuff about these spray parks, and, you know, spray parks is limited for a certain age. A 16-year-old is probably not going to be the person that's going to be attracted to a spray park. So I think that, you know, we, you know, we would be best with serving the citizens if we adopted, you know, this initiative to go forth with a full aquatic center, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't be back here next year. We're not here talking about Early Wine. We're not here talking about Will Rogers. So why don't we just put our money in the, in the places that we could create a full, fun, aquatic center for other people in this city, and it would pay for itself.
Have you, has there been a record cap or a study of the use of those facilities based on either zip code or miles from the facility that people drive? Has there been any of that done?
We have some data on that, yes, sir. I can tell you that the, the family aquatic centers do attract attendees from the entire metro, the far reaches, sir, of the metro.
And what, I guess the percentages would be important of that.
I'm sorry, sir.
I guess the percentages of, how, you know, is it 10% of people that drive more than 10 miles, or, I mean, that would make, I'm just thinking as we're just trying to determine where to put another one, you know, how that would come in, come into play. Second thing is, and this is something that was, is there any more comments or questions, Sam? Something I would, Craig kind of glossed over it, but I think it's a point that we, that needs to be addressed, and that is that Macklenburg is north, Menace Lakeview is east, Woodson is south. Last year, these three pools, we had outside charitable contributions that were committed to keeping these pools open. Chesapeake had committed to keeping Macklenburg open, and United Way had, had committed to keeping the other two open. Chesapeake is the only one that came through. And Chesapeake actually made their donation to keep it open, and the city got basically left holding the bag on the other two. And I think that while we sit up here and we commend organizations for their outpouring of support, I think also when an organization doesn't do what they say, they need to be, it needs to be mentioned. And so I didn't want that, I know Craig can't say that, but I can. And the United Way, they committed to those two pools, Menace Lakeview and Woodson, did not follow through with their commitment last year, and that's why we're, why we had an issue. So, Sam?
Again, beyond that, Vice Mayor, to get a handle on moving forward, if it is a desire of the council, it seems to be from, from the conversation, discussion this morning, that we put, that we put on the record that we want to move forward, at least to see where we can get to and how we can get to, an additional full-blown family aquatic center. I think as the, as the manager in Parks explores the resources within our current bond issue, with a, with a hard figure and the intent of this council to move in that direction, our conversations with, with corporations in the past couple of years with regards to just short-term fixes, is that they'd prefer to be on the one-time capital outlay than year-to-year help with the operating subsidy. I don't think we have to look at this, this necessarily as how we can, how and how long do we have to wait on surplus bond issues to do this? If this is the intent of council, we do the homework on it, we see the cost on it, the sense, no better time with the census of that available to us now as to where that pop, where that better population is, where this would be located, that that would be part of the plan, and to give the community an opportunity to buy in with the city in, in building this facility. If that's our intent, I think if we get it out there, we may surprise ourselves that we can get there sooner than just waiting on accumulation of bond funding.
I mean, I, that, my point a minute ago is that we need to think outside the box. I mean, most of us realize there's $30 million in the MAPS thing to move an electrical facility that may or may not have to be moved. If that doesn't, if that doesn't have to be moved, it's my, it's my belief that the money could be allocated to some other purpose. At the risk of sounding like I'm the guy that's going to change all the MAPS programs, I will continue, though, because I do think that there's $30 million there that's for no other purpose, which is tacked on that thing to move that electrical facility if the, if the Central Park goes where the original concept, I mean, if the convention center goes where it was talked about originally. If it doesn't go there, some of that $30 million is going to be left over in the MAPS. I mean, I don't know that we could do that, but that's the kind of thinking, I think, that we could do some of these capital projects with, if we'd, if we'd think outside the box and look for those kind of opportunities. I think they're out there. As Sam says, though, it's much easier to find it for the capital side, because those, that's what geo-bonds are for, that's what the MAPS money's for. The operations side's the costly part, without question. But I just, I would like to see us just look for things, rather than looking for all the reasons we can't do it, look for reasons we can do it, and get moving down the road.
Well, and just on that note, if we find the money for the capital projects, by default, we have to know where the operating money's going to come from. And if we're in a, if we're, if we have budget issues year-to-year.
Right, I know, that's my point. The easy part's finding the capital money, but we're not even, it seems to me we're not willing to really go out, look outside the box even for that. I real, I do real, I agree with you 100% Bryant. The hard money is the, the maintenance, the operations money.
Gary?
If we ask Wendell, I would, I would bet that the Will Rogers Aquatics Pool, in the first full, it's not the first full year, I don't think we had a first full year, it was a part year, part summer, by the second full year, it was paying for itself. I mean, that's the beauty of these aquatic centers, from what we're learning, the performance.
But you make the assumption that if you build another aquatic center, that you're going to have 100% new use. If you cannibalize from the other two, then you may have, instead of having two that are a little bit above what they cost, now you're going to have three that are below what they cost to operate. That's the, that's the risk you run.
The problem is, is that one of those. I think it's risky to look at parks in the same sense that you, that the, the commercial side of things looks at them, that it's got to pay, it's got to make money to do it. I mean, cities don't have parks, that, that's not why parks are started. They're not started for the purpose of paying for themselves. They're, Woodson, for example, the socioeconomics of the area that Woodson draws from, and Menace Lakeview, it probably would never pay for themselves. So we, we have, the decision is, do we continue to do that? Because it's the right thing to do, or we not do it because it doesn't pay for itself? We, I don't want to get too far down that road when we're talking about parks of, does it have to pay for itself? I mean, I think it pays for itself in other ways that you can't, that are intangible. But, but I think we, we, in order to be the kind of city we want to be, I think we've got to have a good park system, whether it pays for itself or not.
Just as long as we know that going in, on the front end. Gary, did you?
Well, when you talk about paying for itself, I think you're talking about the yearly operating cost. You may draw enough money in to pay the operating cost. You'll never draw any park facility, any function in a park, will you ever pay off the capital outlay to make that park attractive, you know? So when you're talking about paying for itself, you're talking about the yearly operating stuff. But I think what staff is hunting for is, that's, everyone, I think that they've heard that we'd all like to see a plan for another aquatic center, and, and I would personally like to see where we're at in the aquatics plan that we adopted some years ago, and how this fits into all of that. I assume if, if these are the only three pools we're talking about today, Wendell, does that mean you fully plan to keep all the other things operating this coming summer as they have been in the past?
The pools that are currently funded in my budget that hasn't yet been presented are Northeast, Early Wine, and Will Rogers.
Okay. But they're all the spray parks and all the other things that are in, in your aquatic plan are okay, except you need direction on these three right here?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? The only thing about Menace that troubles me a little bit is, if, I'm of the opinion that we ought to consider keeping Menace open until that spray park can be built out there. But we're going to put $5,800 in capital repairs and then, and then tear the pool out the very next year, I assume would be what we'd be doing on that. But still, I don't think we ought to leave the Menace without something out there. Macklenburg, if it has a spray park, I'd be hard-pressed to put this much money into it again. And it sounds like Woodson is one that we're planning on keeping open anyway in the plan and keep it as a free one. I'm afraid that if you talk about increasing the amenities at Woodson, even halfway to an aquatic center, you're going to have to end up starting to charge. And you just heard that the reason Woodson was so popular is that it's free. And I think that that option needs to stay there in the city, that they have some frees to go when they can't, if they can't afford or they don't want to pay to go to the aquatic centers. So, you know, I think that if we do, do Menace this year until that spray park can be built, knowing that it's going to, that the pool will go away, and not worry about Macklenburg this year, and, and keep Woodson open, that would be my direction at this point in time.
Any final comments on the pools?
Can I just put a summary in that we, we'll go forward and do Menace and Woodson at this point in time. We'll go forward with the construction of the Menace Sprayground, and we'll bring back Macklenburg maybe as a program improvement, a request as a part of the budget, budget process. But we won't say no to that today, we'll just defer that and make that a part of the budget process.
I have one other comment. I would like to see, I'd like to know if it's possible to sell Trosper Park. It's not my ward, but it's not a park in any sense that anybody thinks about parks. A big piece, it was one of the four original parks, the four corner parks. It's, it was intended to be the park southeast. You notice that in none of this conversation that we talk about any parks southeast, and it's because it would be, it would take a magnifying glass to find them, is why we don't talk about them. And pools, even, it'd be even harder to find them. But we, I believe that in the long run, we ought to combine the $1 million or so that was in the, in the 2007 bond issue to purchase land for a park in southeast Oklahoma City. Try to, if we can legally sell Woodson, sell Woodson.
Trosper?
Combine those two.
Trosper Park.
Trosper, I mean, Trosper and, yeah, that's the other one. That's the southwest corner of the four original parks. Since we obviously are not, cannot, will not develop Trosper, we ought to sell it. And whatever money, combine it with the million that's in the park, that was in the 2007 bond issue, and find a place to locate a park southeast. So we might as well look at all of it while we're in the, while we're looking, we ought to just look around and.
Why not then look at, at all the potential surplus park tot lots? Councilman Kelly had him look, had Parks look at a couple this past year, didn't you surplus a couple in Ward, Ward 7?
I think it was, was it four that was under surplus that, from the Ward 7?
Yes, sir. We're, the council has approved that, we're working toward the sales.
Most of those little parks, those little pocket parks, are not going to generate revenue. They are so small, they're so isolated, it's residential all around them, it's going to be very difficult to generate substantial revenue. But Trosper's large enough that it's possible that somebody would pay some money to, for that much land. It's close to a quarter section of land there.
If we, if we look throughout, I just think of one on Northwest 10th, Meg, right east of Portland, where the garden place is, there's a little, I guess it was a park building or maintenance building for.
Yeah.
Parks. That's on, that's on 10th Street. I mean, that, that would have some potential resale.
But if we, if we look at that and decide that whatever revenue we generated from, we'd put it in a fund to do some of this, that's some of that outside-the-box thing I'm talking about, about how to find a way to finance this stuff.
Larry? I think you need to get a quick update, Sam, on that. That's Meadowbrook, Meadowbrook Park. The decision, recommendation was made to the Parks Commission and approved at the last Parks Commission to tear down that building, because the Friends of Northwest 10th Street have a plan to make that a key integral part of the revitalization of all of Northwest 10th Street. There's been a significant tree planting out there, there are plans for a pavilion and/or a trail around there. So that park is a long way from being declared a surplus. It's, it's a key, key ingredient to revitalize 10th Street.
I'm just using it. I'll give you another example in my ward. In Ward 2, there's Delaney, old Delaney Park that sits up there on 39th and May, and Wendell and I have met with Wayne Hickey for on and off for several years. I mean, that's a prime piece, we're a part of that park, not all of it. I just, that's, there are opportunities, I think, if we take a.
Any final comments on the parks and the pools, and anything else? Any final comments on the parks, on the pools, if anything else? Seeing none, we will move on to citizens to be heard. Does anybody sign up to speak or want to speak? Seeing none, we will adjourn to executive session, or recess to executive session, not adjourn, recess to executive session. We'll be back.